All right. We are good to go.
Okay. The clock is ticking, so I will call this meeting to order of the DeKalb County Commissioners. And today's date is October 7th, 2024. Good morning, Dottie. What you got today?
Good morning. Well, let's talk about some positives here with recruiting. Sunny Meadows has hired someone for third shift full time. And so everything came back nice and clear. And Angela has also offered a first shift part-time to someone, but we're waiting on the motor vehicle report. Then if that person is cleared to drive, Sunny Meadows will be down to third shift part-time, second shift full time, and the bookkeeper position. So that's an upswing. One of the things that we're doing is to assist Angela to do some pre-screening phone calls for all of these individuals. But right now, we're kind of focusing on the bookkeeper position. And one of the things that we're hitting a snag is money. People would like to have more money than the 23-something that is offered. But we have some, yeah, I think we have some nice candidates, and we'll be working with her and also Susan, because we will want buy-in from the auditor's office. In addition to Angela, these people really have to work with that person. So when we do in-person interviews, those guys will be a part of those. We had a wonderful meeting last week with our new jail commander and then his second-in-command. So of course, these are guys that we've worked with for a while. But you know, now that they're in their new positions, we as HR wanted to make sure that they knew that, hey, reach out to us, we're happy to help you with however, and let them know what we've been doing for the jail, for recruitment. Of course, the jail commander has been a part of that since he was the second-in-command. But just to give them a little bit more insight into what we've been doing, and we updated the posting. They did ask, because we have, there is a possibility that they will be losing a confinement officer in the next couple of weeks. And so we went ahead, and we've got the confinement position posted right now. And over the weekend, we had a few inquiries, and people are asking for the application and getting that out to them. And now it's up to them to jump through the hoops and get them back to the sheriff's office. So yay. We had, let's see, we had a great tour of the new highway department. So pleased. I mean, our employees should be so happy to be working in a safe, healthy environment out there spaced out so that, it's just delightful. And the offices are great, the barns, the storage, you know. Of course, it's just like in a kitchen where you have all these cabinets and you start filling it up. And then, you know, but I'm just thrilled. And so hopefully, you know, kind of to segue into that, when they get settled, Ben had offered to invite us to hold our in-person fire extinguisher training out there. So nice, big facility. Between Mike Van Zyle, our second-in-command for emergency management, and Ben, we have a lot of out-of-date, off-use extinguishers that we can use for training. So you know, pop it, and you know, actually try it, you know. A lot of times, you know, employees have never lifted a fire extinguisher, and this will be a real hands-on. So the plan is, to kind of segue into that, we're going to, we will offer this to all of our departments, and we'll schedule some things in person. But prior to that, there will be, IPEP has some online training that, not very long, you know, but it gives you all of, you know, the acronism, you know, to keep in mind for, you know, if you had to, you know. And it's only, you know, worst-case scenario, first of all, you call, you know, 911 to get the fire department. But if you are in a position, and you might have to actually use one. So, you know, another good thing, but how lovely that Ben offered us his facility. And, you know, it'll be, it'll be so nice just to have meetings out there. The meeting room, we won't have to, you know, have open enrollment meetings in a Quonset hut with, you know, I mean, and dripping in sweat, you know. You know, Ben and Mark were talking about, you know, about what we've done in the past. And he already had the anti-harassment training in the break training room. And it worked out so lovely. And, you know, with the screen and Ben being the dear that he is, he bought pizza for all the guys, have everybody. So, yeah, very nice. So we kind of segued out of recruiting and everything. Sounds like the Superior Two has a bailiff, an offer out. So I'm hoping that that will be in place very soon. And really prosecuting attorney is, you know, the one that we're going to have, that we still have. The public defender's office did hire somebody, so that's great. And have that person, that person actually started during fair week. And I couldn't believe that Marco Lovero had that poor person come in during the fair to do their orientation, you know, it's just, you know, no way, no good way to get here. So anyway, but that's, that's good. We have that, we have that on. Speaking of kind of training, the active shooter trainings are continuing. We had some on last Friday, the 4th. We have another couple set for October the 28th, 29th. So moving right along for those.
Is that IPEP that's putting that?
It is.
It is IPEP.
Yep, yep. And it's their law enforcement expert that is actually doing them, and she's doing a wonderful job. HR went through, went through it. And the wonderful thing is that she came into our offices. She recommended some things. One of them is, you know, on the, in that office building, a lot of us have a lot of windows. And she is recommending a film to put on the windows so that there's a little bit of a buffer that difficulty seeing in, which may or may not be, you know, a deterrent, but maybe slow somebody down. Then HR actually received, we ordered a door, I don't know what, I call it a claw that fits on the doorknob underneath. So it's sort of a, you know, jimmy it, you can shove it and you can't open up the door. And then another, you know, another couple other things, that if somebody were to breach the office, what to do. She's been doing that with everybody, you know, worst-case scenarios, you know. But yeah, at least you have those in the back of your mind and you kind of have a plan what to do. So they've been going very well. The department heads seem to be very happy with what, you know, the information that we're getting and then also the advice. So.
You know, Daddy, the only thing, I understood the window thing. I talked to Lita about it. Only bad part of that is, that's great if your office is secure and the door doesn't open and you can see out and they can't see in.
Yeah.
But once someone breaches you, and then they shut that door and the window film's on, then law enforcement outside can't see what's going on inside. That can go both ways. So I'd like to know what IPEP's thought on that is, you know, just from a security standpoint.
They have a little unique, you know, because they're, they don't lock their door.
Right.
So.
If you, if in a locked situation, it would be a benefit, but in an unlocked situation, I think it might actually be worse to have a film on the door.
Yeah.
There's something to think about.
Next, next time Christine comes in.
I'd like their opinion on that, or just something to think about.
And I'd assume it'd be first floor only, because second floor, they're not going to be able to, I mean, the angle of looking up, it's going to be hard to see anybody in there unless they're standing beside the window, but.
Yeah.
Is, are they afraid somebody's going to take a pot shot through a window? Or what, what is that about?
I think it's just, people, the philosophy is that the active shooter will go to where there are individuals. And if they don't see individuals, they will move on. So they're, you know, that's the philosophy about hiding, you know. If you can't get out, you can't run, then you hide. So.
Okay.
Yep. And let's see, what else do we have? Oh, yeah, ACA, the Affordable Care Act, reporting. There is still a requirement that we, as an employer, let, do some reporting at when the, oh, at the end of the year. And so we have a meeting set up with Lau, who does our payroll, to start getting that in place. I think this year will be much better because we have been self-insured for the entire year. Last year was very difficult because we were fully insured for half the year and self-insured for the other half of the year. And so there had to be two reports go out, and it was just a lot, lot, lot of data entry. So we're gathering information and working with Lau to make sure that it's a little smoother process. So that's, so we have that meeting coming up. And then something for us to think about going forward is our EEO four reports. Those go out every odd year, so 2025 is an odd year. And that is our, you know, the different categories of positions, the gender, and also race. And so we provide that to the federal government every other year, unlike an EEO one report where a private, certain private employers have to do that every year. But government only has to do that every other year. So we'll be thinking about that going forward. And last but not least, knock wood, things on the political activity area. I have not had any complaints so far about any political activity going on on our, on our, you know, property. So that's good. And especially since early voting starts tomorrow and in the annex. So good to, hopefully, that's a trend, and it will keep, keep going. So anyway, that's what I have for you guys. What do you guys have for me?
Anyone? Anything for Daddy? Excuse me.
Really?
Good sign.
I know.
Yeah, I mean, no complaints, no.
Good news today.
I know, yeah. Well, I try, but you know, sometimes we have news that we have to take care of.
Yeah. That's great.
Anyway, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Daddy.
See ya.
Have a good day. Okay. We have just 15 minutes here. Let's go into payroll by weekly. And before we, I call for a motion, and I want to make a couple comments about payroll. And I just want our employees to understand and know that we appreciate the work we do, that they do. And it seems like pretty well-oiled machine. I hear no complaints about mistakes, no complaints from the public. And I think that everybody does a really good job, and I just want them to understand that when we jokingly pass payroll, it's all in good faith and a lighthearted, and that, you know, jokes and laughter are good medicine for stress and strain. And so anyway, I just want them to understand. And when we approve payroll, we're proving it for ourselves also. It's not just the rest of the employees. So having said that, I will entertain a motion to approve payroll.
I'd also add that I was being serious when I said about the doughnuts. I didn't buy any because they're so darn expensive this year. They were a buck each. And it's, it's, you know, it's just amazing what stuff costs. And I was being serious when I said that, that it's just amazing what this inflation has done to everyone. And, yeah, it's, but I agree with you, Bill.
Yeah, we've got a great team.
A good crew.
Great team.
Yep.
If that makes sense, I'll move to approve payroll.
And I'll second that.
Motion and second to approve payroll. Any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve. Claims. Just look at the claims. The only thing I had, the only question I had about claims was there was, the vehicles for health department, it kind of showed up in two or three different places, different amounts.
Um, yes, because money all came from different funds.
From different funds.
So it's going to show part of it, and part of it's going to show as commissioner, because we had portions of it.
Right.
For the maintenance truck and all together, if you had them all together, then you'd get to where we were. But yeah, they're.
I kind of thought maybe.
It's the joys of fund accounting, and it's just how it looks.
Nothing simple.
Nothing simple.
Did we get the truck to the maintenance yet? Or did, is the Ram truck going to maintenance then?
It's going to.
It will be going to maintenance. I.
It hasn't yet, though, right?
I honestly can't tell you whether they picked up, if health department picked their stuff up or not.
Okay. Just scares.
But once it went there, then, once they got their new stuff, then yeah, it was going to make.
Make them a good truck.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then that also means that there won't be a payout any longer for like mileage expenses for Larry.
For Larry, right.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Still moved.
I motion a second to approve claims. Any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same. Claims are approved. And then we come to the minutes. A chance to read the minutes?
To approve minutes.
Motion and second to approve minutes. Additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same. Minutes are approved. Miscellaneous topics. Oh, boy.
Right?
On the miscellaneous topics, I would skip the first one. The second one's going to be quicker. The, each year Kaiser Township submits their guidelines to you, and you guys just normally do a motion to acknowledge that. You receive them and.
Motion to acknowledge reception of the Kaiser Township Assistant Guidelines.
Yes. Break that motion.
And I will second Mike's motion.
Motion and a second. Are there any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same. That motion is approved.
So there were emails going back and forth, and I included that in your guys' packet on the Okra Sewer Grant. And so, so the public knows what we're talking about here. There was a grant, Okra Grant approved. The estimate at that time, the engineer's estimate, was like 3.6 million. The bids, and I believe there were seven of them, the bids all came in, the lowest came in at 7 million, way over. So rebid had to take place, which that took place on the 3rd. I'm not sure of the outcome of that at the moment. However, due to that and the timing, there is a timing that the Okra funds have to be sent out. So because we are the pass-through entity and those accepting the grant monies and then passing it through, then the commissioners, they are requesting the commissioners do this letter for Bill to sign, that we have an extension, so we have more time and we won't lose that money. So that's the first part of it, is this letter for Bill to sign, if you guys want to approve that.
Let's do that first, get that out of the way, and then we'll move on.
Okay.
When you say that, we're talking about the Kaiser Township assistance, the grant.
No, the letter. The letter to.
That's what I meant to say, the grant extension letter for.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I didn't read that.
Not adding any more money, it's just asking.
It's just adding to, instead of having.
They don't lose that grant, lose that money.
Yeah. Because it would have to be sent out by October 31st. So if a bid was accepted on October 3rd, then it's very unlikely that less than 30 days, that whole process could be through the loan process approved and done. So the letter is to extend it to the end of the year, just so that everybody is covered and we have additional time and not lose those dollars.
And Bill needs to sign this, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So I'd make a motion for Bill to sign the extension letter. The Okra Grant.
I will say. A motion and a second on the floor. Are there any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries.
So it might be smarter to have Chris go ahead and come for his, the other part of this discussion is probably going to take away.
Yeah, could take some time.
I think I saw him walking, oh, there he is. You're so quiet. You're so quiet.
That's, that's, that's new. That's different.
That's new, right?
Just kidding, Chris.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Got a couple rezones for us.
Couple rezones.
Saw that.
Thank you. I know Susan included this all in your packet, but first one is in the town of Corona, which county has planning and zoning jurisdiction over for approximately 0.36 acres. It's two lots, going from C1 Village Commercial to C2 Neighborhood Commercial. The gentleman that owns these parcels would like to build, they're vacant, they're empty lots, build a business or a building for his roofing business. And then his wife or girlfriend, I believe, has a salon. And so they want to have two businesses on that property. This is the first of three steps they'll have to take. The rezone, and then the plat to combine the lots into one, and then go through a development plan through the plan commission. But this is, is the first step, to have that operate as a, as the business of what he wants it for. As you can see on the location map, it's just right inside the town of Corona, south of six, a more zoomed-in area showing those two lots. Again, those will have to be combined into one if he wants to be able to build over it. The plan commission did request that he try to enter off of US 6, provided IDIM receives, he gets approval for a driveway for, through IDIM. If not, he does have access through that back alley. There were concerns from the neighbors about the alley being an alley, for what that means as far as like wrecks and divots and holes in the alley. It'd be safer to come off of six, obviously, but the county doesn't have any jurisdiction on driveways on US 6. So I doubt he would have any issues with that. But if he does, he obviously has two options to get his driveway in there. Existing zoning map just shows that it is Village Commercial, C2, which is to the west, so it's not really considered spot zoning, is the liquor store in Corona.
Okay.
Yep.
Real quick, Chris, can you explain the difference between, to me, between Village C1 versus Neighborhood C2?
Yeah.
What's the difference, why he needs the change? What, what?
Because he wants to have a construction trade business and the salon. Those two uses, the salon is allowed in the C1 district, but not, but the construction business is not allowed in the C2 district. So it's just intensity of uses.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know village versus neighborhood made, it's just terminology.
It's just terminology.
Okay, all right.
Unfortunately. Yep. And then obviously, the last page shows the proposed zoning map. Again, going from the C1 Village Commercial to C2 Neighborhood Commercial. Plan commission did give a unanimous favorable recommendation to the county commissioners on September 18th, with that certification in your packet. So any other questions, I'd be happy to take them. If not, I'm sure he would love a adoption of this.
Makes sense. It's commercial, I mean, you have, you have the grocery store, the liquor store.
Yeah.
Other businesses and.
Yeah, there was no objection except the guy to the, gentleman to the south about the access through the, through the alley. That was really the only, only concern people had.
Sure.
And I think it's going to be a plus for Corona. They need, they need businesses to bring people in, you know. Albright's is great for that, but that's only business in Corona, is Albright's and the post office.
And I saw across the street's gone, so.
That's gone, yes.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, that's good.
I think it'd be really good.
Makes sense to me. Since it's already commercial, if it was residential, that might be a problem.
Different issue, yeah.
Minor change. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to go with recommendation and approve the change from C1 to C2 for properties.
And I will say. A motion and second on the floor. Are there any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carries.
This is, I'll send the signatures together.
Yep, that's a good idea, after, after it's all done. That's fine with me. The second one is for 58 acres on County Road 66 and County Road 17. I would say more County Road 17 than County Road 66, as you can see in your, on your, on your map. But this proposal ultimately is going to be for a new 14-lot subdivision. The plan commission approved the primary plat for that at their meeting on September 18th. I should have printed off, I'm sorry, I can send them to you in an email if you want to see what the layout is. But going from A2 Agricultural to Rural Estate RE, the reason for that change is due to the type of subdivision and the size of lots that they want to have. They will all be on septic, but it's, but it helps with the type of subdivision they're wanting. Our minor subdivision doesn't allow for internal streets and also four or less lots. So when you do a 14-lot subdivision, it kicks it into a conventional subdivision, which is not allowed in your A2 district. So you have to do it, do a rezone to the, in this case, Rural Estate, to allow for the conventional subdivision, which allows for the internal street. Basically, they did get, I believe, check with Ben, I know that they have verbal approval, preliminary approval, for the driveway coming right across the street from San Giovanni Court, and then it'll swing north to a cul-de-sac and then another cul-de-sac to the, to the west. So I will email you that plan, just so you can have a look at it, if this gets approved today. But it is a new 14-lot subdivision. They vacated that Rotundo Estates Lot 3.
Okay.
To include this as part of that 14-lot subdivision. So plan commission was very busy at our last meeting with this particular project, with the vacation, the rezone, and then the primary plat. But nonetheless, going from the A2 existing zoning district has a future land use map of mixed residential, or sorry, mixed agricultural, rural residential, which does allow for the higher-density lots. And also, just for your information, San Giovanni Estates. And also, just for your information, San Giovanni Estates was created in 1994, I think, I can't remember. It's been a long time ago. And sat vacant until like 2020.
Five years.
Twenty, yeah, it's been like 2021, I think, is when it, or maybe 2020, when, um, Westrick LLC purchased it. And I think they have all but one lot sold. And people are building and they're selling the lots for good chunks of money and people are but putting $800,000, $1.3 million homes out there. So, um, it's, it's, it's very nice. If you've not driven back there, they've done, they've done a real nice job on, um, on this lot. This, um, subdivision, I assume, will be something similar. They don't have calls for a retention pond like San Giovanni, but they do have, they went to Drainage Board, got approval to, um, have their, uh, drainage go into the, to the wetland to the south. So, all the lots will feed, um, via, uh, yeah, what's the word I'm looking for? Swales on the side of the road, thank you.
Yeah.
Swales on the side of the road to feed down to, uh, that wetland and then it'll drain into the county.
Is lot number 1, 2, and 3 all wetland?
Uh, so 1 on Rotundo Estates?
Yes.
No, but the majority of 2 and 3 are, are, majority of 2 and part of that 3 is, is considered a wetland.
So this, the acreage up here is not part of Rotundo Estates then?
No.
The, the one in question that you're, okay.
No, it was all, um, when they did the Rotundo Estates, they planned on just dividing this off into, to three or four additional lots, but then I think they have so much interest in San Giovanni
Sure.
for those type of subdivision. And I think it'll look very similar as far as having that really nice entryway feature. And, uh, I think they just have a, a need for, for these type of, of lots and, and subdivisions. So, it'll be really nice out there in the county.
Makes sense.
But, yeah, got off track a little bit, but, um, going from RE, there is an RE to the, as you can see in the, the, the proposed zoning map. And I'm not exactly sure why they're zoning RE in the, the northwest corner. That kinda touches this via the corner, um, because there, it's, it's farm ground and, and our typical lots that you see in the county that front, um, county roads. So, um, that's something the Plan Commission will have to take a look at to see if it's something we should change, but, yeah, so going from A2 to the RE, will allow them to do this, this, uh, 14 lot subdivision.
San Giovanni Estates, the same, uh, RE or they are?
No, it's not. So when it was developed in 1994, 1995, around that year, um, it was zoned, um, County Suburban Residential. We had, back in the day, there were about eight to 10 county zoning districts. Now we have 24.
Okay, alright.
It's a whole other issue that I would like to bring up with the Plan Commission, but it's, it's, it's gonna be an undertaking. And then when our zoning ordinance was rewritten in 2009, effective 2009, this was just kept, or sorry, it was changed from County Suburban Residential to A2 Agricultural. In time, I think the Plan Commission should do a, a Plan Commission initiated rezone for this area too, to get that all zoned RE, because it is more rural estate than agricultural. They've got covenants on here that you can't raise farm animals, you can't do this, that, and the other. So it doesn't make sense for it to be, um, agricultural. But, um, yeah, when that was changed in 2009, it just kind of got skipped over as a-
I assume they're septic too, San Giovanni Estates?
They are, yep, yep, sorry. Alright, on septic.
Makes sense, guys, to me, I mean, this is the kind of zoning I like to see happen.
Me too.
You know, it's right next to one that's already residential.
Yeah.
And, uh, nice homes rebuilt, good tax base coming out of this. I mean, 800,000, million dollar homes pay big taxes, so. I'd make a motion to approve this rezone.
A motion and a second on the floor to rezone. Are there any additional comments, questions? There ain't none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Okay, there's two folded that have my signatures on it. These are the ones that need to get to Chris.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I think some of the others kinda got mixed up in passing.
That'll be nice.
Yeah, I'll send you that subdivision.
That'll be nice, yeah.
Primary plat too, it's-
14 lots, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember flying over this 20 years ago, going, are they building a penitentiary out here?
Yeah, the big geek. Yeah, it's a very Italianate style, um, entrance feature and, um, yeah, and it, I remember when I started here, driving out there and being like, what is this?
Yeah.
And like, why does nobody develop this thing? And, um, then luckily, a few years later, they came in, bought it up.
Yeah. Okay, those go to you.
Yes, sir. Susan, I'll get these to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay, so, back to the OKRA sewer grant. So, in the email from, um, Common, Commonwealth Engineers, they had explained that at the meeting that was held at the plant, everything that the sewer district has done to try to get the funding, needed, the raising of the rates, basically everything. So, they, at that, um, meeting or whatever they had at the plant, they were respectfully requesting the county to, uh, fund an additional $2 million out of the ARPA funds. Obviously, they would accept anything. They said they would accept anything, um, but the financial perspective of it is not looking good. The estimate for the revised bidding was, um, or project was 5.3. So it went from 3.46 to 5.3. Right now, when this email was sent, they were looking at possibly having to move the, um, I believe it's individual resident amounts from $55 to $100, I believe is-
At least.
At least, um, and they were still, still running those numbers to figure out if that was going to be enough. So, they're waiting to see, well, not waiting, but they're wondering what you guys are going to do and what your-
It'd be nice to have that rebid in our hands with that amount is, but we haven't gotten, that was supposed to be in the-
That was on the 3rd, and I don't know, I haven't heard anything about it.
Anything.
We talked about this briefly at economic development meeting. Only 300 customers is the problem.
That's the problem.
And, just small-scale sewer and water is so tough to do, when, especially if you go 30 or 40 years and don't put any money into the kitty to- Guys, I just don't know how we can keep flipping this ARPA money around as much as I want to help them. I just, yeah, we commit and say, oh, let's move it over here instead, and then let's move it over here. Just, you know, and $2 million, obviously, you can't do. Where does it end with, when the next, you know, Waterloo, what they paid to revamp theirs, it was in the- That was it?
Good half $3 million.
Yeah, and that was-
They get that as a, that was a USDA low, low interest loan.
And we discussed that also in economic development, that USDA might be the source on this one.
How much ARPA money did St. Joe get? Do you have that number?
$150,000, I think.
How much?
$150,000.
They did directly?
Yeah, for their water project.
Yeah, from us or from the?
From us.
From us, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the original ARPA money.
Yeah.
What did they get?
I'm looking.
He's looking. I mean, was it half million, was it 250,000 or what was it?
No, it was-
It was $150,000 for their, we didn't get anything for the sewer project.
No, I know.
No, he's talking, what did they get from the government directly, not from us?
Oh.
Actua Towne get.
Yeah.
I mean, Waterloo got some, can you?
Water, yeah, Alberta did.
That I have no idea.
Yeah, that's the question I'm asking. The other question I am asked, will ask, is what do they have in their, do they have any access in their budget? In other words, on the books or in the bank account? What have they got? As far as, uh, have they got a plus balance or a minus balance? I assume they don't have a minus balance, cause they can't. But what have they gotten on the plus side? Have they got any additional funds they could put towards this project?
Okay, so I just messaged my, um, client, Peter, to see if he knew the amount. He said, "The bid opening was pushed back to give contractors additional time." So now the new bid opening is the 10th at 10 a.m., so
Okay.
we don't have that amount at this time.
That's at this month, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be, uh, Thursday? So at this point.
If you look at the big picture, how to ride, this is an issue all over the county. Outside of the incorporated areas, where we've got mainly septic systems all over the place. And 200 bucks, uh, well, $5 million project for 300 sewer customers is, uh, actual project. Yeah, yeah.
That's a lot.
Yeah, I don't know how, until they rebid that, we get some idea of what the actual numbers are, I don't know that we can take any credit for that.
Bill, didn't you say just the excavation alone was a million dollars?
Yeah.
That just blows my mind.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's not, it just, you know, it is what it is, but I, I just can't imagine it takes a million dollars for excavation. I mean, we're not hauling away like heavy metals and stuff and the ground or anything, right?
There's not a lot of volume involved as far as dirt removal. I mean, it, it's take one tank out, the, one of the old tanks, the second tank, they're going to, uh, is going to stay and be used as backup and, you know, it just, and that would include some piping, no doubt, but the whole, the whole thing is is digging a hole, putting in a concrete tank, it's a big tank, it's as, maybe as big as this room, maybe not quite as big. The plumbing, some pumps, and, you know, and a generator and so forth. Where they come up with $7 million is just way beyond me. I, and, and for the excavating, I think somebody was trying to take somebody, the cleaners, to be honest with you. I hate to say that, but it's today's world.
Well, I think I wouldn't object to talk about, try and help about it in some regard, but I wouldn't want to be the last money in. You know, after they've figured, gone, gone through every avenue that they can, and they have a, you know, shortfall at the end, maybe. But I'm, I'm not so I'm not sure that, uh, you understand, I've got a commitment for 2 million dollars, so good use of the profit.
Well, the promise is disproportionate to other communities. Give 2 million to a small community like that, you know, give Alberta 10 million if they need money, you know, or whatever, it's, it's it's a tough, I feel bad for them.
Yeah, I do too.
I, I just, you know, you can feel bad all you want, though, that doesn't fix the problem. Let's face it, we really don't have the money. It's committed, it's gone. We, you know, we've repurposed it many times. And I would be more of the opinion that, and I know this doesn't help them, cause they need to have committed, commitments in order to go forward. But I would be more interested in saying, okay, if these projects don't go through that we've already committed to, then we'll throw the money your way. But to pull it from the projects we've already deemed as necessary and I just, I think you gotta make decisions and eventually stick to them.
Evidently, uh, they applied for a low interest loan and that did not fly. There was some glitches in that as far as qualifications.
Really?
And, and the question was asked, me personally, can the county loan that money? And I had to answer, I didn't think there's anything in the code that would allow us to do that, but whether we went to investigate that or not, or is that even a remote possibility?
I've heard of that.
I don't, yeah, I, I mean-
I think we wanna start being a bank.
That's was, that was kinda my first comment.
I mean, if a bank doesn't wanna do it, I don't think we wanna do it.
Yeah.
Even if we, I'm not sure we can, but even if we could, I don't think that's a good idea.
I don't think it's in our-
It'll almost be like you're issuing your own bond. Exactly. There's an Indiana bond bank, but, right? Yeah.
Yeah, which is another, another thing that they should really investigate too. The Treasurer's Office has really done some good things with the Indiana Bond Bank. They've got IFA, USDA, I think they have some avenues that they could look at, see if they can't get this problem solved. If you, if you're really taking it down to the, to the bare bones, it's, it's a ratepayer issue anyway. These are user fees for the, that the ratepayers are gonna need to, to sue it something.
And Waterloo took a big hit. When they did theirs, they had to raise their rates significantly and at her, their property values there somewhat. You know, short-term pain they had to endure in order, though, to get up to,
Yeah.
get up to speed, so that everyone does better.
We did give Waterloo 200,000.
Mm-hmm. And I, like I said, I wouldn't be opposed to, like Mike, to throw something that way, but 2 million, I, there's just no, it's not even-
It's not there.
Not even thinkable.
It's, it's, that's too far past for-
I'd like to see, when the rebids are the 10th?
Yes.
10th.
I'd like to see what those bids come in at, too.
Yeah.
Because I just, something is-
I think we need to hold tight till we see those bids.
Yeah.
With any, if they need more thought on it, really, to be honest with you. And, uh, let's see what those bids come in at.
Cause Waterloo has-
Yeah, I didn't know until right now that, nobody knew.
Yeah.
20, 2,500 in Waterloo? Utility customers in Waterloo has what, 2,500, I believe?
Uh, population is 25.
Yeah, 2,500 people, so maybe what, 800, 900,000 residences and businesses or?
I suppose.
So three times the size, probably, at least.
Two or three times at least, probably three times.
And if I understand, is, um, is Volcraft or Nucor one of their two, do they have their own treatment?
No, they're on, they're on the system.
Really? I thought they, I thought they had to improvise and do something on their own.
What they told me, the Volcraft is part, is on, is on the system.
Okay.
But they, they, they really didn't charge Volcraft what should've been charged from the get-go.
Okay.
The connection fee was inadequate, the charges were inadequate, same with, uh, Reinhardt Plating. They're on it also. And they went to Reinhardt Plating and asked for some help and they said, they kinda escorted them out the door.
Okay, yeah.
No, no going to do, so.
Well, I don't blame them necessarily, I mean, you know, it, it would be nice if they would help, but the law's the law.
The way they explained, yeah, the law's the law and it is what it is. The way they said it was, and this is one side of the story, that while they was under charge, they oughta be willing to kick in some extra now, but-
Yeah, would you do that on your property tax, so, well, you know, I'm undercharged, here's, here's 100 grand, no problem, you know?
Right, right, so yeah, let's, let's, let's put it on hold.
I'd like to see the bids.
Let's see the bids.
Like Mike, I'm not opposed to not, uh, willing to help in some capacity, but 2 million, I just-
They get those bids even if we had to call a special meeting at some point. Before the two weeks, we could do that if we have to, but I don't know if that'd be a need, but-
How much notice do we need on a special meeting?
Forty-eight.
Executive session, 48 hours.
48 hours on executive, uh, would that be?
I think specials, 48 hours also.
Okay. So that, that would be helpful then, if, if it's crunch time and we need to do it. I wouldn't be opposed to that, for sure.
Right, right. Okay, moving on.
Um, and before I forget, this is totally off topic, but before I forget, I didn't, I did not obviously schedule the executive session that we need to have, um, for today. How quickly do you want that?
Two weeks? That'll work. Let's do it in two weeks. Put it right on, uh-
I will make note. That is gonna be another short meeting anyways.
Oh, is it?
Because, um, Jody and I have another four-hour drive for auditor's conference. So that would actually work, because it'll be a shorter, regular meeting and then we could do it right after.
Right after?
Yeah.
Like that?
I'll have to look at the, uh, it might even be sooner than that.
Okay, well, you got some time.
Yeah, but I will, I'll get it in for that.
Okay. Work that out.
Yeah.
We'll go with whatever works. But you get a bonds, traveling all over the country.
Right?
Yeah, we understand.
Yes. Okay, I don't have anything else extra as far as miscellaneous.
Anybody else, anything?
Yeah, email from, uh, uh, just a second, I'll tell you. just a second, I'll tell you who it is. No, 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 this isn't.
Okay, good.
Anyway, from the director of the Auburn Community Chorus, which is a new chorus group, it's before about a year ago.
Auburn Community, what, Mike?
Chorus.
Chorus.
Chorus, which is kind of.
Well, Mike, can you put it closer? Mike, maybe that'll help you. I know your voice is.
I haven't got my voice back yet. Anyway, they were asking if there might be an opportunity for them to do a 20-minute or so walk-through Christmas caroling at the courthouse.
Oh. In the courthouse?
Yeah. Yeah, just kind of maybe a walk-through for the, for the team members, for the, you know, staff.
Oh, I see, during, during hours.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I thought that might be nice to ask, but they'd like to visit Suddy Meadows too, and they could be a real treat for the Suddy Meadows residents too, but
Definitely.
I thought it would be a nice touch for the holiday season.
I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I, it's not a demonstration, it's not a.
No, it's, it's a celebration.
It's a celebration.
We allowed.
How would the employees feel about that? You work in the court, would the employees, would anyone be offended with that or?
No, they would love it.
They would? Okay.
We, I'm trying to think, last year, we, well, a couple of years, we've allowed the, um, high school like jazz band come and play even out in the rotunda.
Rotunda, yeah.
And, um, I mean, many employees would go out and, and stand and listen to them for a while and, and then, I mean, they weren't here forever.
Okay.
And then we used to have, like when we would close the courthouse for dinners at holiday, Christmas time, we would always have somebody come in there and also. But the last couple of years, we had here that we could listen. I mean, it's nice, it's enjoyable. Chris?
What you got, Chris?
I love Christmas.
Okay.
I think you should try to coordinate it when you and treasurer's office do your carry-in.
Our Christmas carry-in?
Yeah, because I think it'd be nice if like our office come over, annex office, surveyor's office and all that.
Yeah.
Health department. That'd be nice.
I'm all for promoting Christmas, so I, I just want to make sure no one would lose their mind over it, though, if they feel like they're being indoctrinated or something, you know?
So the treasurer is the lead of the, I would say, I, I'm not any part of that planning whatsoever. The treasurer's office.
It's sad to see.
Yeah.
What that's about, but they, they mentioned if there was an event going on like that, it would be, it would work out well.
I got no problem.
I have no problem with it.
Right, right.
We'll make it happen.
As long as everyone's okay with it, I'm good with it.
All we need is a consensus.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Okay, moving on. Sheriff Brady. Morning.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Excuse me.
You got some for me? Okay. Thank you.
So I'm just here this morning to talk about courthouse security and the proposal or the idea to have courthouse employees use the south door of the courthouse as an option. They could continue to use the north door if they wish, but effectively they wouldn't need to be screened as the general public is, so, but that would be an option for them. The current proposal, or I'm sorry, the current ordinance that we have was in 2019. That's when the security was put in place and that's paragraph four that I provided you with on their talks about courthouse employees being subject to this, the same screening as the public. So what I would propose is a change to that resolution and allow them to use the south door. There's already a card reader there for the proximity cards, so that's nice. Don't have to incur any costs with that. However, the, the ID cards that the employees have, Jack Smith from IT told me are not all proximity cards, I guess. So they'd have to be changed over to having proximity cards. He said those are about $4 apiece to, to change those over to the, having that ability on them. I think another thing that, as I have my notes there I provided you with, I think another thing that might be necessary if this was going to be put in place is probably some signs out near the south door notifying the public that that's a employee on the entrance and the public entrance is on the other side of the building. And then maybe a memo or something out to all the employees, letting them know some of the guidelines, you know, being aware of this around is when they're using that door. If they do see someone they don't know, they could direct them around to the, the public entrance. Not holding doors for other people, the door for other people if they don't know who they are. But some basic stuff like that, but I think overall, pretty minimal as far as any kind of cost or changes. It's just, for the most part, a change in the resolution allowing that. It would alleviate the security at the public entrance a little bit if we were allowed to do that. I had meetings with, I think, most of you one-on-one at some point in time. We talked about it, but any questions you have for me about the idea?
I never understood why we picked and chose which employees could use the entrance and which couldn't to start with, so makes 100% sense to me, except for one fact. I, I'm a bad person. I just walk up behind the person and they escort me in and now we don't have that buffer locked area. So you're opening up a possibility of intrusion into the building. However, you know, you're not going to stop all evil people. You know, let's face it, they can drive a car through the building if they wanted to. So I think it's a good idea. We either trust our employees or we don't. And I, I think it's ridiculous to tell the auditor or the treasurer that they can't come in the building without security, but prosecutor can. What's the difference? There's a difference. So I, I think it's a good idea. I would like to see cell phones be addressed in the same ordinance, in my opinion. I've, did I talk to you about that a little bit? How I thought it'd be great if people could come in and put their cellphone in a locker if they were going to the third floor, you know?
I think we did talk about that.
It just, I, I don't know, I think we, we need your oversight on the security initially. And, but what do you guys think on employees? I, I think they should all be treated the same. What do you guys think?
Well, absolutely. Use the south entrance, I think. Realistically, we just do a very cursory, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Search anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it just makes sense. It's going to speed things up a little bit.
Yeah.
Get people in and out. Real quick, I think we, your point about refresher on how to use that entrance properly is, is a good idea, but I support, I support that. I'm, I'm a little hesitant to just throw cell phones in and out. It, it, right with this, just because I think we need to make sure that we're we're square with the, with the judges. I think this is a good idea.
I like the idea. I guess I do too. I wish there was a way, I don't know what I want to say, how I want to say it, that there was a way to notify security if there was some kind of a breach at that door. Not, no, it was a, I didn't describe, describe a panic button or something, but I don't know how that would, how that would operate.
They're not too far away. I, I think if an employee walks in and someone follows them in, employee walks over to security and says, hey, someone, I don't recognize them, just kind of came in behind me. And then they can go over and check it out. Maybe someone was confused about which door to use or.
Allen County Courthouse handled their security. I think everyone has to go through there, don't they?
I can't remember specifically.
I think the judges even have to walk through the security, don't they?
My, I can't remember specifically. I've talked to various sheriffs and other courthouse security staff over the last year or so. And everyone that I talked with, the staff uses a separate entrance.
At Allen County?
I can't cite specifically as Allen County. I talked to so many over the last year that I can't cite which ones or which way.
Because when I was there at the, I think it was the sheriffs in there, the judges, and I think the auditor maybe, not the auditor. There's a department, they, I watched the lady, she had to put her purse through the, they actually have an X-ray machine that they put it through and, and she was definitely an employee there. So, but again, I think our employees should be treated the same. We either trust them or we don't. And like you, like Mike said, oh, yeah, you look good. You know, unless we're really going to pat people down and go through and rummage through their stuff like they do at the airport, what's the point, you know, so? Yeah.
Without an X-ray screening, kind of. Yeah, not real. Totally 100% effective.
Well, yeah, this also would make it more effective to do better screening on people just coming through.
Right.
Because you don't have six employees standing right up at the door.
Right.
So I think that takes a little more pressure off of
Yeah.
of security too.
I like the idea.
Motion?
I'd make a motion to approve this change on the security to allow employees to use the south door with a, I assume it's an RFID card they.
Okay, so I don't think you can just approve it right now. I think you have to wait until you amend the resolution.
But don't we need to make, don't we need to set the guidelines now and then?
You could set the policy now and then have me draft.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Accept his recommendation.
Yeah, I would, yeah, that's why I guess.
But it can't go into effect until.
Yeah, absolutely. We have to change the ordinance at that point.
It's making sure everybody's clear.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
My motion.
And I'd recommend here that we make sure that the judges are all aware, if we're going to make a change, they have that information.
What was that? You recommend?
I suggested we make sure the judges are
Okay.
are aware of the, the change too.
Do the, does the RFID card, is that the only thing they have to use or do they have to enter a PIN also?
It's just the proximity card.
Only reason I say that, a lot of security areas, not only the card, your personal PIN, because someone could steal your card and then walk in, so I would maybe suggest upgrading that to also maybe putting a PIN code there. Just, you never know.
It'd probably take a different reader.
Yeah, because it doesn't have a keypad on it. Just something to think about if you really wanted to secure it. That way an employee, you know, if someone steals their card, if they don't have their PIN, they're not getting in. Just something to think about. I mean, you know, security better than me. I'm just, I've been around it a while, though, anyway.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion second, I assume? Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor. Are there any additional comments from the public? Are none or all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both saying, motion carries. So we get it ruled up and go forth with it.
Thank you for taking the initiative.
Okay.
Anything else, Sheriff?
I don't think I have anything else at this time.
Uh, I was wondering about the upgrades on the cooling and heating over there. Is that complete?
Uh, the, the chiller is all done. Someone was over, I think, I thought it was one of the commissioners. Was it, was it you, Mike? And you saw how nicely it was done.
Looked great.
Yeah.
So there's a water spraying everywhere anymore?
No, not, not right now, not today, but it's still early. But, uh, so the chiller is all done, um, and also the backup heat pump that was missing has been replaced.
You did get that?
Yeah, so that's all done also. And, uh, we're continuing to work with, uh, the other contractors on moving forward with the other various pairs, their, uh, the air handlers. Yeah, so making progress and we'll continue working on it.
Okay. Would my swing and buy and take a peek at that? We'll be later on.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, that was a mess.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, the before and after.
Yeah.
It's pretty, pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Okay, we're just moving along here, buzzing through this.
We are.
Uh, you have anything else?
I say, do you want Ann to come up now?
We can, we can. Ann, you want to come on up now since you're here and get this out of the way?
Save you waiting an hour.
Is that mic on?
Nope, sorry. Do I need to repeat that?
Yeah.
Okay, my name is Ann405125, County Road 65 St., Indiana 46785. All right, I'm gonna just kind of stick to my notes here. All right, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My comments will pertain to my recent interactions with several board members of the DeKalb County Public Health Department, during which I attempted to raise concerns regarding the adequacy of informed consent for residents of DeKalb County concerning, concerning COVID-19 vaccines and what role US commissioners may play in helping that happen. I want to make it perfectly, perfectly clear from the outset that my comments are in no way intended to question the morals or ethics of the public health board members. I fully trust that each board member has served our community to the best of their ability, both through their professional roles and their philanthropic contributions. I attended the Board of Health meeting this past July. I spoke on the concerns I had that any DeKalb County resident receiving a COVID vaccine was likely not receiving proper informed consent, the cornerstone of ethical medical practice. I stated that my work with React 19, which I've talked about before, has given me a daily seat to witness the absolute devastation that has occurred to tens of thousands of Americans and that their abandonment and censorship by our government should be something that anyone receiving a vaccine should be aware of. I also mentioned, mentioned that there was a recent initiative called the Hope Accord that had been signed and circulated among tens of thousands of doctors, medical professionals, scientists and concerned members of the public calling for an immediate suspension of the COVID-19 vaccines, comprehension reevaluation of the safety and efficacy of all COVID vaccines, the immediate recognition and support for the vaccine injured and the restoration of ethical principles abandoned during COVID-19 era. I stated that it is a moral and ethical imperative of any public health department to make sure that anyone receiving a COVID vaccine is properly informed about all the risks. I was told by a board member heading up the meeting that they could not do that without a law being passed. I did not understand how that was possible. If after all, they knew these risks were happening, how could they ethically be held from the public? That would seem to violate the very foundation of informed consent. It was a packed meeting and due to other issues, I knew the meeting had to move on, so that we ended the conversation. On Thursday, August 8th, I contacted the health department and asked if I could get the contact information of the doctor who spoke at the meeting because I wanted to better understand his comments. I was told that I could leave my number and that person could call me back, which I received a call later that evening. When this board member called, he once again explained that they could not say what I was asking. He stated that doctors had to say only what the government says that they can say, uh, that they can say, so that physicians could get, quote, government stuff like vaccines free of charge. Those were his words, not mine. I then asked if he could explain to me the moral duty a doctor has, and I was so clear on this. I said, I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about, I really did not want to make anybody, you know, think that I was offending them. That I was not clarifying to him, knowing that they've been given information that many vaccine-injured people have been basically left for dead. I've provided so much evidence on this and I've, um, and not informing the person that they're vaccinating that this type of treatment might happen to him and that would violate a medical oath. He then said, this conversation is over, and he hung up. I immediately drafted an email to the chair of the health board, who I believe was traveling at the time, but as the chairman, he's the primary point of contact. I probably should have waited to settle down. I was a bit taken aback by the abrupt response I received. I wrote that I was extremely disappointed to be so abruptly dismissed and that the DeKalb County residents should be able to expect a better level of communication from the Board of Health. I also stated that I'd be considered filing, and this is something peers and I have been going around with, uh, filing a complaint with the Attorney General, not specifically regarding the DeKalb County Board of Health, but that this lack of informed consent needed to be addressed statewide. The next morning, I received another board members and that's kind of a long story, but I appreciated another attempt was made to reach out. Our conversation was primarily focused again on conveyed, oh, there's nothing we can do. Um, we have to stay within the government narrative. Additionally, during our conversation, I sensed that this board member may not fully recognize or believe the potential injuries associated with the vaccine. For instance, that very day I was interviewing parents because I, that's with, with React 19, that's what I do is I, I've interviewed uh, many, many people. Then, and that day I was interviewing parents whose son died of the vaccine. And his response was, well, so they believe. I should have mentioned to the board member that that was what, that was put on the son's death certificate that he did die of the vaccine. But given all the death and injury I witnessed, it was incredibly hard for me to, to hear such a dismissive response. And so, given the apparent reluctance to discuss the broader issues surrounding informed consent and the challenges that doctors may face, I thanked him for his call and we ended the conversation. However, obviously I don't feel the issue is resolved. I then again emailed the board chair and a portion of my email stated. However, obviously, I don't feel the issue is resolved. I then again emailed the board chair, and a portion of my email stated the following. "The erosion of trust in science and medicine is a significant concern, not due to what some label as misinformation, but because the public is increasingly skeptical about the responses from government and medical institutions to those with vaccine-related injuries or even legitimate questions. If medical professionals feel constrained by government regulation, which in turn are influenced by larger financial interests, and pharmaceutical companies are shielded from liability, then it is the patient who suffers the most. When the public perceives that their doctors are not only, are only allowed to echo a government-sanctioned narrative, trust in the medical profession will continue to deteriorate. I would like to propose a constructive dialogue on these issues." The chairperson responded with an email, said that there's nothing more he could do, and he felt that I was putting the medical community on a defensive path. Sorry about that. To which I responded back, saying, "If any of my previous conversations came across as a personal attack, I'm very sorry. I was extremely careful to clarify to my questions with the doctors on the phone that this, I'm not directing these towards you." And one of the doctors acknowledged that, and he said he believed he was acting morally and ethically, which I respected. I said, "I respected his position and his experience." And then the chairman said, "Well, I don't think there's anything we can do to satisfy your view." And I responded, "My goal is not to satisfy my view. I am seeking to understand the doctor's perspective and the guidelines you are working with, and how these guidelines can impact our community. If the community is not being adequately served, I am interested in exploring how it might be better served. Neglecting these harms ultimately hurts the residents of the county. It would be much better to deal with this issue now before another public health emergency. These issues will not disappear, and public trust in health authorities continues to decline. It is crucial we work together to improve the situation. I remain hopeful that we can have a discussion that fosters better understanding for everyone involved." I waited a month for a reply, and after not receiving one, I sent a follow-up about three weeks ago, saying, "I wanted to ensure you had ample time to respond to my previous email before following up. I remain hopeful that you will reply on our shared goal to provide the community with the best possible health information." Still no response. So, why? I've spoken here, I don't know how many times, why am I pressing this? Why am I pressing this? Because you cannot see the horrific devastation of the lives that I have seen in the last four years, not only with vaccine injury, but also with fraud, deception by our government agencies, their communication, and all of this compounded by government censorship, and not want to make sure that your community is aware of it, especially those for public health. You can't do it. There's no way. There's no way I can just be like, "Oh, well." I would like to share with you what recently happened with a local pharmacist. I was picking up a prescription here in Auburn. I clearly believe in modern medicine and I'm grateful for antibiotics. And after, you know, you talked to them, and, you know, after she gave me the information, I shared with her that, I said, "Could I just talk to you? I work with React 19, which is, you know, largest organization in the country that deals with vaccine injury. I'm told about what we do," and this pharmacist said, "You don't have to tell me." She said, "There's no way I would be giving these vaccines if it wasn't part of my job." There's something really, really wrong. If public health officials can't give us anything but the government narrative, so they get free stuff. Remember us before? Remember how we were concerned about, "Oh, you know, we're just going to have to do this, or we won't get our money?" Or if people's jobs, they're having to go against their conscience, that there's a problem there. I'd like to bring to your attention this book. This book, Worth a Shot. This is Bree Dressen, the co-founder of React 19, and my good personal friend. This is coming out in November. Secrets of a Clinical Participation Who Inspired a Global Movement. She's at the center of all of this. She was in the clinical trials. She was flown out by the FDA, the CDC. She has worked with Fauci's people. They were promised they would be helped, and the public would know about it. I have offered to the public health department doctors, "You want to talk to Bree? You can talk to Bree. You can get firsthand information," so that they don't have to believe, you know, "I'm a nobody," you know? So, and Bree is also, along with many other vaccine-injured, have a lawsuit against the Biden administration for censorship. This is all in process. So, there's no lack of information coming in. So to sum up, I'd like to do an SVAR evaluation, which is used in the medical field first. We have a situation that there is currently no fully informed consent being given to DeKalb County residents. The background, the patient-physician and medical-professional relationship is being interrupted by something. There is something that's, they're not, this information cannot be disseminated. Assessment, it appears that physicians cannot speak freely, that they're told they can't get their free stuff, or they lose their job. The resolution is to open up communication to see if we can find ways to make this happen. I have checked with lawmakers. If there's anything barring the public health department from saying these things, and they said, "No, there's no law." So, again, the public health department has cut off communication with me, so I don't know why they can't, besides for what they're telling me. I'm here today because you appoint the board members, and I'm seeking your recommendations on how communication with the board members regarding this issue might be facilitated. I understand that I may have frustrated or annoyed the board, which is clearly not my intent. I believe the board members are well-intentioned individuals who want to serve the community. However, this issue is not going away. If you understand everything else that's going on, and all the vaccines that are new now coming on, and how they're changing everything over to the mRNA, but this is not going to go away. And if they're constrained to some government narrative, so they get to keep funds or their free stuff, I don't, it's the public that loses. Again, I cannot be more clear that my intent is not to disarge any board member. I respect their service to our community. I understand why they maybe hesitant to engage with me on this issue. It's challenging. It's complicated, but this is about people's livelihoods, and the public deserves transparent and informed communication. So, the end. I don't know if you have any recommendations?
I've got a question, actually. Give you a little backstory. First, I have a friend that's an AME, that's an aviation medical examiner. He's the one that makes sure pilots are healthy. As you know, all the airline pilots had to get the vaccine, too, as patients that were healthy as can be. Both took the Johnson and Johnson, both got severe myocarditis, however you say that. Neither of them will ever fly again, and they each had $300,000 a year jobs, and one of them also had a stroke afterwards. So...
And it's not just J and J, it's all of them.
I'm just saying, though, he, as a AME, though, has been threatened by the federal government, that he's not supposed to say anything to the pilots. And so I feel your pain here. Now, my question would be, though, what does informed consent, do you have a template? Do you have a sample of a letter that they could give someone? Or is it just willy-nilly, this county's going to tell people one thing, this is going to tell, is there a template already established?
Well, that's what I would like to work with, the public health department. We can certainly make a template. I mean, there are people like me all over the country trying to, you know, speaking at their commissioners' meeting or whatever, and just, most of the people that I work with are just trying to get their shots banned altogether. And with the Hope Accord, there are, there are tens of thousands of doctors. But, okay, so going, that's not going to happen. I mean, I, well...
Well, let me stop you for just a minute. We can talk about this all day, but the Hope Accord sounds to me like a good organization, as far as, why can't they put together a sample letter saying, and it needs to be short? In other words, you give a 42-page document to someone, they're going to go throw that in the trash.
Right.
It's like whenever I go into the hospital now, and they give me a packet of 84 pages, and I go, "Just do the surgery." So, I would ask you, since you've done such a good fight here, and I believe in what you're doing, don't get me wrong. But it's got to be simple, and someone with authority has to put together a template or some type of letter that states directly to the public that everyone can agree to give to someone. In other words, I think it'd be very bad if each health department made their own little letter or their own little recommendation, because I think we need to be unified in this.
Okay, so my assignment is to come up with a template.
I would like to see something like that, because I agree with you on all these points. I've seen people injured from this. I'm not saying all vaccines are bad. I'm not saying that.
I'm just saying...
I'm just saying this COVID thing is a joke, and when I say joke, it's very deadly. The response was a joke, let's put it that way. However, I agree with you that these doctors, from this doctor I talk, he's afraid to say a word to people, because he'll lose his job. He'll be run out of the profession. And I think an informed consent would be a great idea. What does it look like, though? Again, it can't be 84 pages, and it can't be full of medical terminology that people don't understand, you know? And that's...
Yeah, it's difficult. In fact, I had, I had arranged for some of the top people in the country. Janine Ewens, who, I don't, the Murthy versus Missouri case, which is the largest free speech case going on in our country, this is huge. Attorney for her, Bree Aaron Seres, who handles vaccine injury cases throughout, throughout our country. And then John Bowden, who has a million and a half death certificates showing the issues between the hospital protocols that were used in deaths, and then the vaccine. Anyway, and Marlon, Senator Braun said, "Sure, I'll be part of that roundtable if he can get it my schedule." Marlon Stussman, Tyler Johnson, Jim Banks, the Attorney General. Couldn't get everybody's schedule coordinated before, before the election. But at any rate, I'm hoping I can still do that, because that is something the entire public... Our biggest issue here is censorship. And I will tell, I mean, there's no, the American people have no idea what has been kept from them. They have no idea what has happened. And so, how do you tell somebody when they're about to sit down? "Hey, just know that if anything goes wrong, your government is going to censor you. They're not going to be there. There's no help. The countermeasures program, they've denied 97% of the claims. There is no help for you if you get injured." That has to be part of that template.
Well, I guess what I'm talking about is when you watch these commercials for whatever drug that comes out. At the bottom, "May cause severe bleeding, death, you know, uncontrollable bladder, whatever."
And you will receive no help.
But at least they disclose it. We're getting no disclosure with the vaccine at all. So I'm all for a disclosure, but like I said, it needs to be short, simple, and to the point. And I would, I'd be your advocate for that, but I think it needs to be unified, and it has to come from big players like Braun and Johnson, especially Johnson being a doctor.
Right.
If he's willing to speak on the issue, and maybe, maybe he could be part of putting together some type of disclosure. So, but for us, just as...
I just don't see it happening for the local...
No, that's what I'm saying, is I can't just tell the local, "Here's the policy, or I'm going to remove you" type thing.
No, I was just looking for a way to how, to best...
I think you're on the right track with, like, with Tyler, Braun, those folks, and this Hope Accord. Maybe they could all work together to come up to a very simple template to inform people. These are the risks.
Yeah, and because of the PREP Act, that's the other thing. I don't think people realize that the PREP Act takes away their whole right. The people who've been injured have no right. They can't sue the government. They can't sue, you have no right. You take that vaccine, you don't have zero, zippo. And lawsuits have been dismissed, because it's like, "Oh, it's under the PREP Act. There's nothing you can do. The government's not responsible, and neither is Manny."
There needs to be, there needs to be, people need to be told what the risks are.
All right, well, I will work on that with Tyler and the others and report back.
I think that'd be good. What do you guys think?
I totally agree.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Nothing better than a senator that's a doctor.
Yeah, I know.
You know what I'm saying, to give his opinion?
Well, I mean, if somebody like Riquita buys into it, you know, then we've got teeth.
He's been very, I mean, he was always very supportive, as was Braun, against any mandates. And so, unbelievable, there's still a couple of colleges in this country that are mandating the vaccine. Unbelievable. But thankfully, Indiana, there aren't none here. All right, well, I have my assignment.
Good info. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's, we're up to break time. Take a break and do the pledge.
Take a break.
Take a break.
Come back.
And those will not be delivered until?
The end of next year, probably.
End of next year, so we're not looking at...
No, so I'm gonna have to encumber the money from this year for the trucks that we've already ordered for next year, then what's included, make the difference on.
Isn't that amazing that it takes over a year to get a truck?
Give that to Ben. If you guys want to sign this one, then I'll just have it for my records and...
Can do that.
How it works, it comes down here, you're gonna have to come get it.
I know, I'm watching it.
Ben, how many trucks do we have now between single axle and dual axle? I took my wife out and showed her the... She was like, "How many trucks we have?" And I said, "I think we have twenty."
There's twenty.
Twenty-one, that's what I thought.
There's nineteen or twenty-one. I got both in my numbers in my head.
And the idea is to go mostly to tandems going forward, right?
Yeah, I probably won't buy any more single axles.
Well, I was explaining to her, I said how it makes so much sense because you can get such a bigger load, you don't have to make multiple trips and...
More efficiency and get more work done.
Yep, it really helps on our chip seal paving, I mean, just that little bit more material without going to quad.
Yeah.
You know, then when you go to quad, you just, you can't put the underbodies on them because of the extra set of wheels and then... Part of the reason why it's harder to get our trucks, everything's gotta meet that specification requirement, where everything's mounted and able to get the underbodies up under them and, you know, the hydraulic systems and... That's why we have a front frame extension. You look at our trucks, the frame sticks out that much further. Hydraulic pump off the front goes right into front engine and, you know, they're a special build truck. And just like our bodies are all a special build, so these companies, they build these. And we try to, we have a specification, we allow them, if it don't meet our spec, to send us a proposal with explanation of why this works or how it could work, with ultimately us having the decision on how, what we pick. Because a lot of these are built per the truck and per the county. Counties, states, cities and towns are all different. How their equipment's made for what works for them, so. There's a lot that goes into a lot of that stuff. You've seen that spec sheet I sent you, there's a... And you gotta be detailed, specific on all that, or you just, you get stuff that just don't work.
Sure.
You know, and we've learned on the ones we've got, we made changes, you know, so we're trying...
Basically, we have to depend on you to spec these out. I mean, we don't know the minor details, you know, and it's a lot to them.
And I'd be honest with you, I greatly depend on my mechanic.
Sure.
You know, he has a lot to do with that.
Yeah.
He's gotta be able to work on it, too.
Yep, yep, because I mean, he knows what's worked, what hasn't. I know the big stuff that don't work, but the fine detail stuff.
Yeah.
You know, there's an instance in our new tandems where they mounted the center control panel where that comes up. That has vibrated enough, this actually broke the floor out, one of our new tandems.
Really?
Yep, so now we went in and we made a plate to put down underneath of that. Now we gotta make them for the other ones, too, before they do it. Just from that, sitting there just shaking and rattling, that big post comes up while your controls are here, yeah, it's actually broke.
Did you tell the builder about it, or are they gonna incorporate it into design change?
Yep.
That's good.
Well, hopefully his next one's coming with that already.
Do you get like a couple hundred thousand dollar fee for fixing the problem and engineering for him?
You know, it's kinda funny because Kenfield uses us a lot when they get new equipment. They'll bring us, they did, two years ago, they brought a new Moore to us, let DeKalb County demo it.
Oh.
And because we give positive feedback, or whatever the feedback is, we run it in all types of conditions. And we've done that a few times.
Right.
I tried getting them, just start building trucks and just give me a...
A demo?
Demo, year by year, and we'll just put a magnet on the door and...
You can get that done, we'll take care of you.
Yeah, I bet, I bet, because, you know, it's, yeah. So, next thing I got for you guys, I sent you guys, I did not print it off and bring it with me because it's a book. The bridge specs for Bridge Seventeen.
Eighty-four pages.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot to it. You printed it all off? Okay, well, she's got it.
They printed it for me. Jody printed it for me.
I read the first page.
And these signatures aren't until later, right?
No, I got these for today. No, in there, correct.
In here.
The only one I got today, this is on the plans.
Okay.
I went ahead and signed the bottom, it's for the three commissioners to sign and Susan to test it. I gotta send this back to them, they're gonna put this on our cover sheet of our plans for the bridge.
Okay.
But I reviewed the plans with USI, I'm okay with it. If you guys was okay with everything. I put the bid dates in the, in the construction dates, I did not bring it with me what day was. I believe went into April to be finished. We give them a hundred and twenty day. From the day of notice to proceed to have the project complete. I sent you the engineer's estimate along with that, that's ballpark, we should be right around that area because we did appropriate ARPA funds for that project. So it looks like we're gonna be in just under that, hopefully.
This is why we pay USI, right, is to, to kind of bid, or to give us guidance on how, what needs what?
I can't engineer the bridge.
They engineer the whole thing, because they even put how much asphalt would be needed, how much steel, I mean, so...
I mean, we could do a lot of that, but I'm not certified to go in and...
Right.
Structurally redesign a bridge for this type of work.
Are they the ones that made the eighty-four page document, USI, then? So, now I know why we pay them so much. I mean, you read that, I had read more of it than just the page, but my head was spinning going half way through it, like... There's more work to this than people realize.
A lot of it's redundant, a lot of it is legality, just for bidding purposes. All the way down to the, you can't use stuff from Iran and all that stuff. I mean, it just, it's crazy what goes in them mid docs, but it's required. So, if you guys are okay with that, send that out to bid, I'll get that done, and then if all three and Susan can sign this cover sheet, I'll get that back, we can go on to plans.
And for transparency, reminder that you have set the money aside in ARPA, but with the plan to spend everything by the end of the year, then the project will actually be paid probably out of a different highway fund because
Okay.
expenditures will be adjusted so that money will be sitting under a different fund number
Got it.
when it's time to...
Now, that can't, can we encumber that money over? Since this is, this will be bid before the end of the year, it will be awarded, but they have until April, I believe, to finish the project. So they won't get payment until then.
The point of finalizing everything out of ARPA is so that we can be done with our ARPA reporting at the, of this year, for the end of this year and be done with it.
I understand.
So, if I would encumber it and not do some adjustments, then the reporting will continue on and on and on.
But there's a way we can use them funds yet for this?
Just move it, buddy.
Hey, just till that works, I'm good.
I'd make a motion to approve the bridge rehabilitation plans for Bridge Seventeen.
Motion second on the floor, any additional comments? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same, motion carries.
Excuse me.
Ben, I think they need some help in Tennessee with I-40. Are you going down there to help them with that one?
You know, I'd help anybody if I could, but there's...
Can you imagine that?
You know, I feel really bad because honestly, you, I watched the, I've been watching some of the world news here. In North Carolina, they said ninety-seven percent of the residents down there do not have flood insurance.
Yeah.
Because a lot of them homes has never flooded, wasn't in a flood area. And you look at the devastation down there.
It's amazing.
And then people just lost their homes, lost everything.
And they're cut off from the world. Ash holes cut off.
I, uh...
Then you scan that too.
Again, I have so much sympathy for them people down there, I feel horrible. I couldn't imagine that. I'm glad to see there's some relief going their way to help.
Can you imagine the engineering on those bridges on I-40 with the lakes and the road and?
Oh.
I just...
I can't imagine that, that much water in those mountains coming down those creeks and those narrow valleys.
Yeah.
I mean, when you think about twenty-four inches of water, rain, and it's, it's all goes to the funnel.
Goes to the valley.
It's just like a funnel, and it's just like torrents. Amazing.
Yeah, last thing I got for you guys is for the one, all three commissioners can sign. The other one is probably to be the commissioner's president. The first one I got is the 2024 CCMG, it's the re, road resurface project. This is a change order that I've got. The original bid amount was for one million five hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The total price of the project was one million five hundred and fifty-seven dollars, nine hundred, no, one hundred, one million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-eight cents. So I went over just over thirty-four thousand dollars, about two percent. So, which is very little for that size of project. I pushed very hard on the contractors to utilize our funds. You know, in the last few times that we've worked with API, we've sent a lot of money back to state. Over a hundred, well, we sent back sixty-five thousand of our own funds, that's twenty-five percent.
Hmm.
So then I had the seventy-five percent of the state's funding as well. That particular project was on County Road Forty, remember that? Well, if that material would have been there, we wouldn't have had to crown the way it was and... I bid it that way for a reason. You know, I'm glad they went under budget because of the way it wants to come up, extra funds, but I want to utilize our material, our money.
Which is good.
Yeah, so, this one come in real close, I mean, we was thirty-four thousand over, but out of a one point five million dollar project, that's not too bad. I mean, we're right at two percent, so I'm happy with that. I know where the, where the material went, and it was justifiable. I worked with them through it, I've got a breakdown of where the material went as far as surface and stone. It was utilized well on the projects.
Right.
So, on this change order I've got for all three commissioners to sign. And then the last paper I've got is a certificate of substantial completion. This is just letting API, or approving the projects complete with API. As sign for, that's for the president to sign, and then I can get the billing done and start getting my closeout documents done and get payments submitted. So if you guys are okay with that, approve for all three to sign, and the president, president to sign the last one. Excuse me, I spit it out.
I'd make a motion to sign the 2024 CCMG Road Surface Project Change Order, as Ben described. Second?
Motion second on the floor, are there any additional comments? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same, motion is approved. All three sign.
That one, yeah. This one's for Bill, and this again was the completion of it, correct?
Yep.
API's done a good job for us, haven't they?
They do do a good job, yes. Brooks and API both, we're pretty fortunate to have them in the county to get the bids we get, and they both do a good job, yes.
Excuse me.
You want me to scan these to you, or are you gonna make copies of them?
If you wanna just scan them, that would be fine.
I can do that, yes, absolutely.
Want a motion on this one, Bill?
Yes, sir.
So I'd make a motion to have the president sign the certificate of substantial completion for the road servicing project. API is the contractor.
Back at that. Motion second on the floor, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same, motion carries.
I'll also send you, I can give you this one, I got affidavit, final waiver lien from API as well. I'll scan after, I can give you this copy.
Just scan it with the stuff and...
Some grants are nice, but manage a lot of paperwork. I'm telling you.
You know, it would be nicer, it's just us getting all our money back that we pay in.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying.
Hell, I know, I mean, without having to go through grants.
Right. Thank you. The only other thing I've got, just some informations for you guys. County Road Fifty-six is ongoing and at the final stages. We are at the point now this week, the schedule is, Brooks is supposed to come in and do the final inch and a half surface.
Inch and a half.
And then they're gonna do, Slusher, I believe, is coming in to do the seeding on the ditches. The ditches all got graded last week, and then they're gonna top off the stone shoulders. They'll come in and install the signage, and then the striping, road is scheduled to be opened up the twenty-first of October. Or being noticed, it's twenty-three. Let me count it. Yes, twenty-first, looks like.
It's not too late to seed, huh? You can still do it?
Twenty-first is when it's planned to be open.
The week of the twenty-first, it should be open, yes.
That's great.
So I was out there last week, I actually drove down it last night coming home, and it's a nice road. You know, there's a little bit of areas in some of the ditches I didn't, I'm not real pleased with, but it is functional, it'll work. Some of them's a little bit steeper than where I'd like, but due to the rideaways, hindsight, you know, with engineering, it'd been nice since we was acquiring property, maybe acquired a little bit more, they got some, moved the ditches back to make the ground slope a little bit, did more gradual. They have worked with the homeowners out there and was taking the slopes back on their, on their property, that's where they've received permission, which has made it great. But in the design, if we could acquire more property, we could have moved them culverts back. And that way the slope from the road wouldn't have been as steep as some of the areas was, but it will, it will be fine. It's still an awful nice road for where it was to what we have now.
It might be a little bit of a challenge with that seeding coming in this late of erosion, if that seeding doesn't take hold.
I was wondering.
And they'll be back this spring to correct it.
Yeah, especially if those ditch banks are a little bit steeper than what you might have preferred.
Right.
Probably matters how much rain we get, what the temperatures stay at, doesn't it? I mean, don't you need a certain temperature for it to germinate and grow and?
We need some temperature, we need, we'll need some water again.
Yeah.
So we've got a ten-day dry spell looking at, and that could be a problem getting germination.
Anytime you plant, first October, you take a little bit of a risk.
Yeah.
It's just that gamble, you know, some years it'll take off, you'll do great, and other years it turns off cold and you start to get frosts and things and...
Yeah.
You know, the grass, the grass will grow pretty quickly, but you gotta allow it to get the roots established and enough to survive through the winter.
Yeah, if you get a cold winter, it can freeze out.
Yep. But as part of the contract, they will have to come back in the spring and address areas.
Will they seed and straw that, or would that be that blow on?
You know, Bill, I'd have to look at the plans to answer that correctly, but I imagine it's probably hydroseed.
Hydroseed.
I would imagine.
This late especially, I would think.
Right. Yeah, we got a meeting on that tomorrow, and I may ask that question to see, and I don't remember without pulling the plans up.
Hydroseed's beneficial on a slope, especially like...
Right, right.
But our CCMG got wrapped up, API is finished, they've got one spot to come in and correct, it's not very big, on the asphalt. They're supposed to hopefully get that done this week. And then they are started on County Road Fifty-two in Garrett. They milling over there on Garrett section, and then they'll continue on and finish that short, short stretch of ours.
Great.
So that will be done here soon. I think that's about it as far as projects is wrapping up. I mean, we've always got our little things we're doing, stripings coming, and we're still working on getting some of our roads dressed up for winter, and I've got some more berman we gotta get done and, and things. I know you guys, as mentioned and asked about an open house for the new highway department. I don't know what your schedule's looking like, what you guys are thinking, and when you wanted to have it. I'd like Mark to be there, and he's on vacation next week. And then I'm looking maybe at the week of the twenty-first? If that would work for you guys, because then I'm off that last week, October, but...
Twenty-first is what, is that?
That's a Monday, then that's Commissioner's Day.
I'm good that day, or I'm good anytime that week.
Twenty-second and twenty-third, it's a Tuesday or Wednesday that week. I don't know what time of day you guys is wanting it, if you's wanting in the morning, if you's wanting in the afternoon, if you's...
That week would work for me.
Late afternoon, just because the weather will be, hopefully, starting to get a little cold, it'd be nice to keep the sun out there, you know?
I called, bought our sign, I thought that was close, it'd be nice to hold off for that, but they are a little bit behind, he says we are probably a month out yet on the sign, so...
You thinking during the week, or sometime during that week, or?
That's what I was planning on, I didn't know what you guys, timing, what you was, time of day you was wanting, or how long you wanna set aside for it, if you wanted to go late afternoon into a little bit in the evening. I, I, so I'm hoping, I'm just, the guys I got them working in the shop, I prioritized that this week, to get that done. So we're getting behind on services and things, too, so I'm hoping they can get the shop done this week. Next week we can start on services and then I go, so it may not be perfect, but it, I know I don't want to wait too long, we're gonna be getting in November and it, there's nice days, but...
Yeah, that's, that's a challenge sometimes.
Right.
Yeah, I would say evening for the public to be, to be able to entertain people.
Late afternoon, early evening, sun's still out, and I say evening, not, not like seven o'clock, right?
No, no. Yeah.
So what time would you think, how many hours you want to do it during the day, what time would you want to start, what time you want to finish?
Hmm.
When's last call?
Nine AM.
Nine AM? You're more hardcore than I am.
Three or six, something like that.
What are you saying?
Like three or six, baby.
Because I'd like to have, I could talk to some of my employees, maybe I can have them come in a little later that day, I'd like a lot of them to be there for it.
Wouldn't want them to work more than they have to, though, just to...
Right, so that's what I'm saying, if we, if we go till six o'clock, unless we pay overtime, we could start later that day. If I know about it, I can arrange for it. It'd be nice to have, I, I don't know how this is gonna go, I don't know how many people we're gonna have. It'd be nice to have a few people in each building, explain things, show things.
I, what, three to six, that's...
That's, I think Mike's suggestion's good, if Ben, I think that's a good idea, too, instead of having them come in, what, they usually come in at seven?
Yeah.
Come in at nine maybe instead, and... I mean, it's your call, I guess, I hate to pay overtime, though, to entertain.
Because I think, you know, the ones that can't, we wouldn't need everybody, but that way the guys, they've worked hard for that.
Sure they have.
And I'd want them to be able to be there and...
But I think they would be proud to show that.
Yep.
Yeah, definitely.
To show that, you know, and have participate in that.
That's Monday, that...
So what day you think?
Well, the Monday's the twenty-first, so it would have to be, we could do that Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday that week.
Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday, you're saying?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm good with any one of those.
I can do Wednesday, whether you're Tuesdays, fine.
We got Monday or twenty-first or twenty-second?
I'd rather do Monday just to wrap up all county work that day, myself, but whatever you want to do.
Okay, October twenty-first.
Bill, are you good?
Yeah, I'd have, I'd have time for my nap.
I didn't know your name was Joe.
Okay, so we're gonna do Monday, October twenty-first, from three PM to six PM.
Alright.
Sounds good.
Can you make a note of that, please? Thank you. Is there anything that you guys want there? Refreshments, anything?
Okay.
Tom Perion, sixty-two?
I just want to know what you'd like, how refunding it, and that way I just plan ahead and get set up.
Are you gonna have some basic refreshments and maybe some chips or something, don't you think, or snack rolls? Trail necks or something that people could munch on?
Because that way I know I can set some tables up.
Cookies. Now you're killing me, I'll eat the whole plate.
So, are you guys gonna do that, are your lighted funds? Your administrative?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
I mean, we're talking a few hundred dollars, right?
Just, yeah, a couple hundred bucks. Just got all the Jackie Henders in at Sixth Street Deli. Deli was chips and dip and cookies and, you know, light stuff, I don't take it hurt.
Sixth Street Deli?
Yeah, she's really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they could...
They did some other catering for us, didn't they?
Yeah.
They did our lunches.
Yeah, that's right, they did our lunches, yeah.
Only other thing I thought, maybe like we got a whole Dutch Heritage, if you wanted pies or cookies or something like that, I could always get... I didn't know what you guys was thinking, or if you want to see about getting a big cake or something.
Well, we did a big thing with Dutch Heritage for Christmas last year.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice to be able to, because she can do the cookies.
And this is more of like a, I would be a little more...
Yeah.
Cutting it messy and...
Figure food.
Figure food, yeah.
You might end up with several hundred there.
Yeah, you might have thousands of dollars to clean, you know, if you do pie.
I would do Sixth Street for the majority of, if you want a big sized cake.
I'm okay with not doing cake, somebody's gonna have to cut it, maybe cupcakes or something, if we...
Right?
A lot of cupcakes, could be a lot.
Could be. I just, that way, somebody, I, I could ask one of the girls, they could maybe stand there and keep it cut up and hand it something. If that's what you guys wanted to do, that's, what I wanted to get ironed out, for we just...
You want to set a budget of three hundred dollars or something?
We gotta get some drinks, too.
I was thinking like two liter bottles a pop, those are the cheapest, just a four cups, like solo cups. You have a nice machine out there? An ice machine?
I can get a bag of ice.
So a couple bags of ice in a cooler, some two liter bottles of pop and water, and from the deli?
Yeah, I could give you some suggestions.
Thinking maybe budget of five hundred?
Maybe up to five hundred, just to be safe.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's say up to five... Okay, let's say up to 500.
You can go quick.
Quite a few people though.
Just a consensus is all we need on that, right? I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
10 million dollar project, 500. Yeah, okay.
Anything else?
Just good job, Ben, appreciate you putting in the overtime to get everything moved and you spent a lot of Saturdays and Sundays out there.
Did.
Appreciate you doing that.
Appreciate it.
Nights, earlier mornings, weekends, holidays.
Yeah, I did a lot, especially for the office, I wanted to make sure that when we moved, less stress on the office and we can still operate and...
And I can attest, the time and effort that Ben put in, I was in and out there a lot of times and...
And other employees too, I mean, there was others that chipped in and so, it was good effort, good team effort there.
Yes, yes.
Appreciate it.
I hesitate to think what, where we would be at if we had to put that time in.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause he called a lot of stuff.
Yes, called a lot of stuff and...
Yeah, that's true. Catching errors and mistakes and...
We're still waiting on the tank, but...
Right.
It's okay, we're covered. We're covered either way, aren't we, Ben?
It's coming and they're paying the fuel to keep our little one full.
That's right.
Were there protection balancers on both sides?
Oh, yeah.
So they did cut those out then?
They cut them off.
Okay, I thought so, as I drove through, I thought, wait a minute, how'd they get that tank out?
They cut them off.
They had to cut them off to get that out.
You had to take the canopy down.
Probably easier to cut them off.
Lot easier. The nice thing is, moving forward, if something ever happens to that tank on that south side, you're replacing those with removable ballards.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, before them wasn't, they had to cut them off, so now, yeah. So now moving forward, if for whatever reason, something happens to that new tank, that's removable and we can take it back out.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
But originally it wasn't designed that way, ultimately that tank ought to last, you know, I found paperwork, the one down here at Doyle Highway, that's 54 years old.
Oh, it'll last every bit of that above ground.
And with the canopy over, keeping the weather off of it.
Yep. Okay, anything else, anything for Ben?
Nothing for Ben.
I don't think I got anything else for you guys, so I'm appreciating and I will keep you guys kinda updated where I'm at with the open house stuff, if I got any questions, I'll contact you and let you know and... Okay.
Alrighty.
I appreciate everything, guys.
Thanks, Ben. Have a good day.
I hope so, you too.
Okay, let's wrap up miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous, any topics need to be brought up by anyone?
I've just got one thing, resident, Mike, that horrible asset, he mailed us all and I just wanna be clear on this, this was on the Acres issue of the property in Auburn, we have no jurisdiction over that, period. However, these are citizens reaching out to us and I think it's, Mike responded, I saw, I've responded to him, I think it's good that we respond, but the city's position's very simple, their ordinance says it's unplanted, they don't have to file the ordinance and I don't think they're in the wrong, the city and what they're doing, but I would like to see, I would like to just respond publicly saying, I'd be more than happy as a citizen purchase that property if people wanted to go in and give the land to the city and whatever would help the city, I wanna do and to beautify our city and put it back the way it was, but I don't think the mayor should take heat, he did something wrong or the council, that ordinance's been on the books forever, but I do think a good negotiator could work with Acres and either come with a buffer that's everyone's happy with or sell the property and then they can invest it somewhere else that needs to be saved, but something's gonna need to be done. I'm gonna let the mayor make his own opinion on what he thinks of the property and the council, but from everyone I'm hearing too, there is very upset people in Auburn, it's getting worse and it's gonna, so, needs to be addressed, the mayor can say what he wants and the council say what they want, my opinion's my opinion, but we do have a lot of angry residents and rightly so.
And I would hope that Acres would wanna be a good community partner.
You would think.
And that, and have thought of some kind of compromise, I don't think, nothing that I've heard from the city or the residents has been unreasonable, I don't think it has.
And the biggest problem is, it's like I pointed out, it was farmland for 200 years, I think it became a golf course in the late 30s, I'll have to look it up, I could be wrong, could be early 40s, but established land use was put in place. The fact that they found a loophole in an ordinance to say, well, we don't have to maintain it, we can destroy everyone else's property around it and that's who we are, I have a problem with that. So I would like to see them sell the property to a group I put together or give it to the city and find some other land to give them to, you know, something, it's just the wrong place for that property. But again, we have no jurisdiction as a county to tell the city what to do and I feel bad for the mayor on this one, he's boxed in a corner, but I'd love to see some negotiation with Acres and like Mike said, you know, let's come up with a compromise, sell the property, invest the money somewhere else, it's up to them, but it's really, I literally have groundhogs digging under my house, rabid raccoons and my neighbors, Jeff Bassett, my neighbor, he paid to trap 13 groundhogs and raccoons, one was a skunk, you know, it's just, these animals don't belong in the city, so, and they were, we didn't have the problem two years ago. Anyway, but again, the mayor and the council, their opinion's their opinion, mine's mine, but I'd really love to see the residents, my email's open, give me suggestions, maybe we could put a group together to buy the property, they would sell it, you know, and I'd donate it right back to the city, be happy to, so...
Okay, Mike, you think? Andrew?
Uh, no.
Susan?
I got a couple, I had a request, and I know the live streaming of all meetings is coming in, what, next July? I have a request that we be proactive on that and do an ordinance to livestream all meetings that take place in this.
I have that ordinance, you asked that of Andrew a long time ago, I have the ordinance, I've been holding my feet on bringing it, 'cause other issues have been more important since we already have statute in place that it's coming, so I will revisit that and then I can bring it forward. However, that being said, we livestream most everything anyways and even today, we're having livestream issues, so we can do that, we can put that in place, but it may not be what you're wanting it to be because we're always having issues.
The statute addresses that, if you have issues, you just have to have it recorded. Now, we had some conversation about this, oh by the way, at the last committee corrections board meeting, so I called Ben Smalls just to get a clarification on the, on what the legislation actually says. It is beyond meetings that are held in this room, it's any public meeting. Doesn't have to be, the equipment doesn't have to be as extensive as what we use here, it could just be through the cell phone or that video streamed up to YouTube, but, 'cause there was some question about whether we were gonna have to stream the governance board meetings at committee corrections or whatever, that does cover all of those meetings as well.
As well. Then that'd be here.
So we would probably need to make sure IT is able to do all that before we say it's gonna start right now and we not have the capability.
They just wanna start it earlier than the July deadlines, right?
Yeah, that's been the request.
Okay.
Yeah.
So probably something to talk to Jack about.
Well, we need to make sure that everybody knows how to do it and again, the committee corrections board has, you know, 20 people, so that's a little different, you almost have to have an hour to do that one, but, you know, it's more be like the...
A plan commission.
Yeah, something like that, you can just, you can just stream it on the cell phone, it doesn't have to be as sophisticated as this.
As this. Okay.
And is the mandate that must be video and audio, is that the new mandate, the July mandates, video and audio?
Video and audio.
Okay. 'Cause we've always had to record the audio for these meetings, right? Audio has always been recorded, in modern times anyway, right?
Has to be livestreamed and accessible, the public doesn't have to be able to participate back and forth, but it has to be livestreamed and accessible, live by the public.
So in a public hearing, they don't, they're not able to like zoom in and opine on a public hearing remote?
No, they can't participate.
Alright.
And I do not respond to anybody that tries to put a message on YouTube, I can't man that in the meeting at the same time.
Right, which makes sense.
I would think.
Well, what's the, so what's your suggestion then, Bill, to get it going faster, I mean...
That's been, right.
I mean, what, how do we do that? How do we, because we...
Well, there's an ordinance, I have the ordinance, Andrew did it a long time ago.
Okay.
So I have the ordinance, I need to reread it and see if anything needs changes with further things that have come out with clarification and whatnot, we also are gonna need to, like I said, work with IT, if it's a small meeting and it's going to be done like just on a cell phone, I mean, we still have to be able to post it, back it up, keep it on for so long, we still have to, I mean, you know, somebody on their cell phone sending it to IT may not be an IT preference if they have a capability of getting something.
Yeah.
Can it be recorded and then streamed or does it have to be live?
Livestream.
Livestream, okay, alright.
That's, that's, yeah, be the desire and that, any meeting that's currently being held in this room would need to be livestreamed.
And that should be...
And maybe we could just do an ordinance to that effect in the meantime and not, not address the committee corrections.
Right.
And let that come in when it comes in, but, and the other thing we have to make clear is that nobody can be moved out of that, it's presently being held in this room, cannot be moved to another room in order to avoid the live streaming.
So I think you're gonna have to kinda, I know, but you're gonna have to kinda, I probably need to go through the schedule and see who's there, 'cause not everything is, like, we have the alcohol and tobacco board once a month for like five minutes, but that's currently in here.
That has to be straight.
So moving thing, I mean, if you just do things in here and nothing can be moved out, I don't know, you might need to weigh it versus come July, then they'll have to do it all the time.
When you get to July, they're all gonna have to be streamed anyway regardless of where the location is.
Right.
Our plan commission and BZA are already livestreamed. Susan or her staff has already helped Meredith do that.
So Plan Commission, BZA, Commissioners Council, they're already, already livestreamed, which are the big ones.
Yeah, redevelopment.
Yeah, that one's recorded, that one's not.
That one's not, that was, that was a sticker, that was the problem.
Redevelopment.
Yeah. Okay, only thing I, other thing I had was Tony Frost called me wondering where we're at on the property purchase.
Is that the one we bought for 10,000, was it?
Yeah.
Holiday Lakes, yeah.
Right.
When, I think when Andrew gets the deed part done, then it will come in again and I'll finish it with him.
Are you writing the deed, Andrew?
I think so, I know the, just have to locate where that is, 'cause it's an older issue and I keep them all in kind of numerical running order. Just search for Frost.
They should did approve that, by the way.
Oh, they did approve the 5,000? Good.
Okay, 'cause I think we were wanting to make sure that that happened. Okay, here we go.
Will they just reimburse us then? Here and they just reimburse us?
Yeah.
That makes, makes it easier, I would think.
Excuse me. Uh, see... I know there was some discussion of, oh, okay, I was looking at, um, I'll go ahead and look, and I'm not, I'm not finding exactly where I am on that one, I'll restart that this week and see, I know we've, I think I've done some work in preparing the paperwork on that one, but I'm not able to, might be in my stuff to review from my paralegal, I will check on that and maybe shoot you guys an email on that letting you know where we're at.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to.
Yep.
I'd like to give them a sense of some time, you know, when this can be wrapped up.
So the last I have was on... Yeah, we had signed the purchase agreement.
Yep.
Two weeks ago and then you guys were just gonna do the deed and give it to me and...
Alright.
And it goes, my office has to take care of it.
Okay.
Possibly, we're having it in two weeks or...
Probably, yes, this week we're getting new carpet in the, carpeting in the office and we did some moving last week and this week is gonna be some more, so this week, but I will work on making that a priority to try to get that done by our next meeting, yeah.
Will he need to come in?
I would, he will eventually have to come in, I would not promise in two weeks because I will be leaving as soon as this meeting is over.
Okay.
And I have to be able to get money ready and stuff, so I will do the best that I can, but I can't promise it. I can't promise it in two weeks.
About four weeks.
Or three, if it's done in two weeks, I can, I can do it as soon as I come back.
Oh, okay, so he could just come in.
He doesn't have to come to an official meeting.
No, it'll just be between him and I once we get that documented.
Okay, okay.
So if you wanna just give him my information, then...
Or I can give you.
Yeah, give me his and then I can...
It shouldn't be a problem for me to get that done either by then.
And coordinate rather than...
That would be easier.
The party.
Yeah.
Alright, that's all I had. That it? Hey, everyone, Stanager, and thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, yes.